Did you grow up in Iowa?
Yeah.
What part?
About forty-five minutes north of the county, just rural Iowa. So if you're a KU basketball fan, I'm from right next to where Nick Collessen's from.
Oh, very nice.
Oh, hello.
Just in case of type issues.
We have coffee brewing now.
Do we have theme music or anything like that?
God, that would be fun, like some walk-up music. Should've, we should've thought more about this, yeah.
They've got to be such a crazy, I was speaking at a sales conference.
They had walk-up music.
Walk-up music for everything.
That's great. Okay, well, I think you guys kind of know the drill. You've been through a few of these, but filming for the Vote Joe Co. website. So you guys will be on camera. It'll be posted hopefully by the end of the day. We're sending it over to the folks at the Overland Park Chamber to post. You have, you both have what the actual script will be. So I'll be asking questions. Taylor will be timekeeper, so she has, she'll flash up the times as you're running out as well as stop. So pay attention to her. She's recording. Yeah, any questions before we get rolling?
I don't think so. The cellphone there, that's the camera?
That's the camera, yeah.
Okay, so it won't be moving back and forth?
It will not, yeah. We've got both of you guys, yeah. So don't, you know, or make faces, whatever you want to do. That's your discretion. Okay, are you rolling now?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay, you guys ready? Awesome. Okay, well, hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Meyer, CEO of the Lee Wood Chamber, and it is my honor to host today's candidate forum for the Blue Valley School District School Board at Large District with candidates Clay Norkey and Michael Hubner. The Johnson County Public Policy Council is comprised of ten chambers of commerce serving Johnson County, and they developed today's questions focusing, of course, on education and community issues. So we will start with a brief three-minute opening statement, followed by a few Q and As, where each of you will have one and a half minutes to answer the question, and then we will end with two minutes for a closing statement. So we'll go ahead and kick things off. I would now like to ask each candidate to introduce themselves and give a brief background on who you are, organizations you've been involved with, and why you feel qualified to serve on the Blue Valley School Board. So we'll start over here with Clay.
All right, thank you, Stephanie. My name is Clay Norkey. I am running for the Blue Valley School Board. I want to thank the folks that showed up this morning for this forum and everyone watching today. You know, I first got involved with the Overland Park Chamber about fifteen years ago. I was nominated by a mentor to become part of Leadership Overland Park. Graduated from there in 2008. Learned a lot about our community. I'd already been involved in Church of the Resurrection. I had been Chair of the Church Council, Chair of the Board of Trustees. But it was Leadership Overland Park that brought everything together for me, where I saw all the connections that were made throughout the community. And one of the primary things that we have here are schools, our public schools, being the best in the state and top in the nation. So that's where it first started, that I really started to understand the importance of the education system we have here. So after that, I became very involved in the community in all kinds of different ways. In 2015, I joined Blue Valley Rec Commission. I was appointed there. I've been there eight years, and I currently chair the commission. We cover all the Blue Valley Rec activities up at Hilltop, the Sports Center, with all the fields and the Activity Center around 151st Street. That's been a great opportunity to be involved with the community. I've been a president of the Bar, of a bar association. I am a practicing lawyer. I have my own firm in Overland Park. But the entire time, it's always come back to education. I have been completely involved in my kids' lives through the schools. I've got nine kids that I've raised throughout the Blue Valley school system, been in six different schools. At one point, I was in five different schools. I've been able to build strong relationships with the administration, with teachers, with students. So I know the ins and outs. I understand how the district operates, and I understand their relationship with the business community and the community at large. Our schools are the most important thing that we have here in Johnson County. It's what everything else rests upon. And there have been so many people that have built these schools up that we have to maintain them. We need forward-looking people to make sure that we can continue the excellence that we have here in Blue Valley and maintain a stable and robust school system for all our children and the entire community at large.
Okay, thank you, Clay. Mike, you're up next.
My name is Mike Kipper. I am also running for Blue Valley School Board at the at-large position. So I'm, I'm a farm kid turned suburbanite. I, I am a CPA and work for a local corporation in a finance leadership role. So I have three daughters. We live in Blue Valley, obviously. We have a fourteen-year-old, eleven-year-old, and six-year-old. So we are definitely in it for the long haul as far as our schools go. So I, I have locally volunteered. My, my company actually is really good about volunteer opportunities, as we were discussing earlier before this started, in just allowing us different avenues to volunteer. So I've been involved in a lot of different organizations. One of my favorite is probably Sleep in Heavenly Peace, which we've done outside of my work as well, that builds beds for kids in the community that don't have a bed to sleep on. I've also helped a lot with our daughters. We have very active kids. I coach my youngest in various sports and her teams and really enjoy that. And, and honestly, helped my other older daughters with their activities, their sports that they play in, and help them progress in that. The reason I think I'm uniquely qualified, I guess, if you will, for this is, is I'm a finance leader that has worked for an organization, several organizations, that have reversed decline. And right now, in, in Blue Valley, we have seen a lot of academic decline, about ten percent in reading and math proficiency, if you will, both. And I have experienced how you reverse those, that decline in organizations that are publicly traded locally or were publicly traded. And I also think we can do the same for our schools.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So thank you again for giving us the background on why you're running. I will now move into our Q and A, so you'll have, again, a minute and a half to respond to each question. So we'll start with you, Mike. As a candidate, what are your top three education policy issues?
Yeah, so the biggest overarching one is, is just a back-to-basics approach. I think we have added some things to our curriculum and other parts of our schools that have not added to our academics. And if you lose focus on academics, which is really what our schools are there for, first and foremost, you start to see the degradation, and you start to see the degradation of other things that are outside of academics. The second thing that kind of builds off that is getting some of the politics out of the schools. So again, there are certain groups and things that have gotten things into our curriculum that don't add academically, that portray a different narrative, and we want to remove those from our schools. And the last is discipline and safety. So we have seen a coinciding loss in behavior in our schools. It's been unfortunate. It's taken from academics, but also it's, it's further built worse academics, if you will. So it's, it's a dual thing. So just re-partnering with teachers, as parents, I think is very important to that. And building that, rebuilding that bond that we previously had, that I think we've lost a little bit of sight on, as well as just ensuring our schools are a safe place for all of our students.
Thank you, Clay.
All right. When looking at the top things to focus on, the top three issues at the school, I think we have to look at some critical areas. We want to look at where do we promote student well-being? How do we inspire learning? And how do we improve academic achievement? Blue Valley schools are already number one in Kansas, the top school district in Kansas. And number two, we are in the top one percent in the nation. So the first thing I think I would focus on is recruiting and retaining top-notch quality teachers. We are, we have the best teachers right now, and we need to make sure that we keep them and that we're bringing in new teachers all along the way. So we have to come up with innovative ways to make sure that we've got the best teachers in place. Number two, we have to address programs that positively impact learning, whether that is improving the wellness and mental health of our kids. So we are, we have kids that are coming out well-rounded, strong and resilient. We want to make sure they're coming out that way. And we also want to make sure that we're addressing things like dyslexia, special needs, and the other things that might be holding some kids back. We have to make sure that we're addressing all those issues. And number three, we did have pandemic learning loss. And we have to make sure that we are going through and making sure that we can catch those kids up to where they need to be. And we are on track to do that. We are leading the state, and we're leading the nation in focusing on that academic rigor. So Blue Valley is on the right track. We need to keep going on the right track and make sure our kids feel safe and supported.
Great, thank you. Okay, next question, a big one for a minute and a half. What are your thoughts on K-12 education funding? And this time, we'll start with Clay.
Our community understands the importance of investing in top-quality education. They want it. In fact, they demand it. One thing that has been lacking is special ed funding. The legislature is required to fund special ed at a certain percentage, and they have never met that percentage. They've not been fulfilling their statutory obligation. They're, I believe it's ninety-two or ninety-four percent they're supposed to be at. They're somewhere around sixty-three or sixty-four. We need that special ed funding because Blue Valley must then take money out of our general fund and put it over into the special ed funding by law. That takes about twelve million dollars out of our general fund that could be used for other things like improving teacher pay, reducing class sizes, promoting additional teacher and student activities, and academic achievement programs. So I think the, one of the big things we have to do is make sure that we are, we get our full funding from the legislature, plus improve that special ed funding.
Thank you. Mike, you're up.
So I work for a company. We live on a budget. We all live in our personal lives on a budget, right? And there are things like special education that we are not getting all of our funding from the federal government also. So we are not getting all of our budget. But I, but, so my goal is to make sure we are reallocating resources. We just raised, essentially, we, we kept the mill slightly less in our school district. But because of property, property values increasing, that essentially equates to a seven or eight percent increase in most of our local taxpayers. So we're definitely getting a lot of money from taxpayers. So what my focus, again, as a finance individual, is to properly utilize those funds and get that, utilize those funds to reverse our academic decline that we're currently seeing.
Great, thank you. Okay, next question. The K-12 education system requires accountability measures for student performance focused on post-secondary success and career readiness. Do you believe the district is meeting expectations for student achievement? And we'll start with Mike.
Yeah, so as I've said, if you look at math, math proficiency, reading proficiency, according to the state website, we are down in both of those pretty significantly over the last eight years. If you also look at ACT scores, I think we're down seven percent over those eight years. So we're, I think we are failing our, our kids in, in preparing them for those avenues. So I think we really want to focus on basics, so we can build the basics with our kids, so that they can innovate and accelerate once they get to the higher levels of learning and build on some of those programs that we also have for the higher learners. So we're, we're missing a lot of those kids in the middle. We're, we're still doing well with the kids that are on the top end because those kids devote a lot of resources outside of school oftentimes. But our kids in the middle are really getting left behind, and we're, we're, we're losing them a little bit. And, and we want to get some of the money back into funding those kids and ensuring they are ready for college and ready for life if they don't, if they choose to go another route than college.
Thank you. Clay?
I think the Blue Valley community is proud that the Blue Valley School District is number one in the state. We lead the nation in school districts. So we are doing very well. Are there areas we can improve upon? Absolutely. And we are improving upon those. I mentioned earlier that we've got pandemic learning loss that we need to address, and we're addressing. But when you look at some of these numbers, you can't just look at one set of scores from one test. You have to look at the big picture. We teach that. Teachers are taught that. You triangulate the data. Is there something with the test going on? What else is going on? You don't become number one in the state with poor academic standards. Blue Valley has rigorous, strong academic standards, without doubt. Can we do better? Absolutely. And we've seen a decline in particularly math. We've got to do better in math, and we're addressing that right now. So we have to continue to do that. ACT scores, across the nation, there was a down, there was a downturn in ACT scores. Kansas was one of the handful of states that remained flat over the last few years. Blue Valley in particular, and in Johnson County, our numbers are eighteen to twenty-three percent higher, depending on if you look at the state or national averages. So we are doing very good with ACT scores. So I believe we are addressing all of our students, whether it is the kids that are going to go into career-ready programs, going to go into higher education, or going to go into workforce or any other post-high school endeavor.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up, Kansas is experiencing low unemployment rates, and employers are struggling to find qualified workers, something we certainly talk about a lot at the Chamber as well. How do you see the school district helping to meet the business community's future workforce needs through work-based learning, such as internships, training, and other career exploration opportunities? And we'll start with Clay.
What I love about, one of the things I love about the Blue Valley School District is the partnership that we've got with the community and the business community, where we go out and we find what is it that is the next thing? Where, how do we prepare our kids for the future? And some of the things that we have are like the fire science program, where we've got a fire station on campus down at Blue Valley Southwest, and kids can go in there and start a fire science program and be hire-ready. They can be ready to be hired when they are out of school. That's fantastic. We've got a partnership with the Johnson County Community College, where kids can come out with an associate's degree. That's amazing. We've got so many kids that are in AP, Advanced Placement courses, where they are getting college credit when they get out of high school, and they're cutting their time in college and therefore money spent in college significantly, whether they can graduate in a semester or maybe even a year early or more. So there are all types of things that Blue Valley is doing because we have these partnerships. We've built relationships over the years, and we have to continue working on those.
Thank you. Mike?
So I agree. We have a lot of great programs in Blue Valley, and I think, you know, the CAPS program, many other programs that help prepare students for either further education or just to be in our community. But as I've stated earlier, a lot of the basics that our students need to exist in the world are being lost. And, and we've already talked about math and reading proficiency, but there are other things that, there has been some expansion on, on things that are requirements for graduation, I think in the last week even. But I would say we need to even further, we need to further educate our students. There are things like just general economic things. I know, I was an econ major in college, and I think, I don't think students fully grasp what debt really means. And we've started to indebted our, our next generation a lot. So things like that, that we need to just give life skills in addition to better preparing them for college with some reading proficiency. Again, our middle-of-the-pack students, we're just not doing right now, and we want to really accelerate that going into the future.
Great, thank you. Okay, what are your thoughts on efforts in the state legislature to expand school choice? And we'll start with you, Mike.
So we are running for school board, not state legislature, so we have no say in any of that. Our, our job on the school board, right, is to make sure that if there is school choice, that that choice is Blue Valley. Right now, a lot of families, even without what's referred to as school choice, are choosing otherwise. We have a very flat enrollment compared to a significant population increase in the last ten years. Whereas, and so you, and we know, we know many people in our communities that have chosen midstream to pull their kids and put them either in private schools, homeschool, or pod schools. And so because we see, as we see that happening in our communities, we want to reverse that because people, even without the state funds to make a different choice, are already making that choice. And so we want to reverse that course and ensure that people's first choice is Blue Valley.
Thank you. Clay?
I oppose taking tax dollars away from public schools and giving them to private or for-profit enterprises that lack the accountability and educational reporting requirements that our public schools have, plain and simple. And I think that's one of the differences in this campaign, is understanding what the school board does. And one of the things that the school board can do is advocate for our students, advocate for our community. I am very much in favor of educating our legislators, legislators, and our community on the importance of maintaining the proper funding levels for our school and not diverting them, not putting them into some area that does not have accountability. Our public schools have strict accountability standards that are required by statute, that we have to give, we have to report how we spend the money, where it goes, what we're teaching, and our academic results from our students. When you put money into other schools, they do not have that, and that hurts our kids. So again, as a school board member, we need to advocate for our kids. We need to represent our school district and our community well, and we need to be positive about our schools. We need to be sure that we are out there talking them up because we need more families to move here. We need more businesses to move here in our community. And one of the main reasons they move here is because of our schools.
Great, thank you. Okay. Other than funding, what do you see as the greatest challenge facing the district right now? We'll start with Clay.
There are, there are a lot of issues that are faced the district each and every day. Some are nationwide, some are local and specific to Johnson County or Blue Valley. I think one of the most, biggest challenges are the teachers, making sure that we've got a good pipeline of quality teachers coming in. There are just fewer people going into teaching, and I think some of that comes from things that happened during the pandemic, when teachers were being harassed by folks. They were not feeling valued, and they were having a hard time. Kids saw that. Kids saw how the parents were acting toward the teachers, and they said, "I don't want to go into teaching. Why do I want to do that?" So we have to reverse that and support our teachers and let them know that they are valued and they are listened to and that we have their back, and that we're going to give them the support services necessary because that is the most important thing we can do. And because we're in an educational environment, we have the ability to do that. We can help. We're teaching our kids, and we can encourage them to go into teaching. And one of the things I loved at the Blue Valley Educational Foundation breakfast, they announced a privately funded scholarship to, to pay for the certification of PERS, so PERS can go to school and learn and become certified in teaching, so they can move up and become full-fledged teachers.
Great, thank you. Mike?
So I agree that we need to mend, I think one of the biggest issues is mending some of that parent-teacher bond that we've lost. I think it started before COVID, and even in a lot of the decisions made by the current board during COVID, I think further lengthened that gap. I think what we really need to do, again, I'll be a broken record, is we need to focus on the basics and getting some of the ancillary things out of our schools and starting to focus on reading and writing, math, arithmetic, those type of things. Because as you do that, you can really, and, and support your teachers and help rebuild that bond with parents. I think we can really accelerate our kids' academic growth.
Great, thank you. Okay, why are you seeking this public office? We'll start with Mike.
So again, I have three daughters, the youngest of which is a first grader over here in one of the elementaries. And so we, my, my wife and I are in it for the long haul. So we are, we are passionate about reversing the decline. We have been frustrated for a while about it as we've seen it occurring. And we, as a family, have chosen to kind of take this path to, to try to reverse that academic decline.
Thank you. Clay?
I think I raise my hand to serve, to run for this office, to serve the Blue Valley School Board for the same reasons I've always served the community. I want to give back more than I've been given. I want to leave this place better than I found it. And I just have a passion for getting involved in the community and, and doing just that. Being so invested in Blue Valley, having nine kids go through and still having a kid in Blue Valley. I've been at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I've been at, I, I can't tell you how many countless concerts and sporting events and orchestras, orchestra concerts and theater productions over the years. It's, it's been an amazing experience. I wouldn't trade any of it. But I want to make sure that we keep that going forward because with nine kids, I hope to have some grandkids come along, and I want them to move back here. And I want them to have the same and even better opportunities than my kids have. So I definitely, I am invested, dedicated, and we have got to see this, our school district flourish and continue.
Thank you. Okay, final question. What makes you uniquely qualified to serve on the board and most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race? And we'll start with Clay.
All right. Number one, I think experience matters. I think it's really important that if you're serving on a school board, you recognize that you now have about twenty-two thousand students that you're looking out for. And that is all kinds of students, not just your own kids, and not just the issues that have popped up in one school building or with a kid or two. It's recognizing that we have a diverse culture. We have a diverse student body, and we have to make sure that we're addressing all those kids' needs. Meeting each kid where they are, each student, and bringing them along and helping them to become the most fullest and best image person that they can be themselves. So with, with my experience in the school district, with Blue Valley Rec, in the community, the relationships I've built, and understanding how the school district works, and the limitations of a school board, because we cannot go in and micromanage teachers. We cannot go in and micromanage administration. We get the right person in place to lead the school district. We point them in the right direction through policies, setting the budget, and we get out of the way.
Finally hit the timer.
Perfect, yeah, right on. Okay, that concludes our Q and A. So the candidates.
Don't I get to?
Oh, sorry. Yes, please do. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, so I, I agree, experience matters. So I'm, I'm a finance leader. I'm not a politician. I work for a company that went through some times where we saw a declining performance. With that performance, we saw things that were not our basics coming into play that took our focus away from what made us really great. And so what we did as a company five years ago was we decided, hey, we are going to go back to our basic products, and we're going to focus on those basic products because that is what our customers want and need. And so we did that, and since then, our company has grown sixfold, I think. And so I think we can, I can utilize that, that type of perspective to build that into our schools and into our budget and into how we think about things. I also have, again, a first grader, so I, I am going to see this through, and this matters to me a lot because I will be in the Blue Valley school system through 2035.
Okay, great, thank you. That now officially includes our Q and A. Thank you, sorry about that. So the candidates will now each have two minutes for a closing statement, and Clay led us off with opening, so we'll let Mike start closing.
Sure. So I'm going to be pretty brief. I think we've made our points. I feel very passionately about our Blue Valley schools and trying to rebuild our community. We are, we are seeing, again, academic decline, and we want to reverse that academic decline. We're seeing mental health decline that we want to reverse, and we want to start to get our, our kids flourishing and, and back to being better members of our communities. Not to say everything is, nothing, everything is terrible right now, but we are losing a lot of those kids in the middle, and we want to get those kids in the middle back up and outward like we previously were.
Thank you. Clay?
Blue Valley is number one in the state, top one percent in the nation, and you don't get there by not having good academic standards. You get there because we have strong and rigorous academic standards at all levels. We teach all the students, every level, middle, top, below the middle, everywhere, all the kids. Blue, our Blue Valley community wants and demands more than just the basics. We address the fundamentals. We address the basics, and we're doing great. When you look at us against the rest of the nation, we are doing fantastic. We are always trying to do better, and we are going to do better. But we can't just strip down our Blue Valley schools down to the basics. We need everything. We need the academics and the athletics and the arts and the activities because we want well-rounded, resilient, and strong kids coming out of our school. We want young adults that can go in and lead the next generation. That's what we do in Blue Valley, and we must continue to do that. We cannot do it by stripping out ancillary things that we don't even know what we're talking about, what these ancillary things are. The details matter. You have to ask those questions because we are on the right track. We are. And we're going to continue moving forward. We are not going to go backward. We're going to go forward, and we're going to have Blue Valley continue to lead the state and the nation in academics, athletics, arts, and activities.
All right, thank you. So this officially concludes our candidate forum for the Blue Valley School Board. Thank you both for participating in today's program. For more information for our viewers about these candidates and many other candidates throughout the county, as well as more interviews, all kinds of good stuff, visit votejoko.com. And please do share these resources with colleagues, family, friends, strangers on the street, everyone. On behalf of the Lee Wood Chamber of Commerce, thank you again, and thank you to the audience for taking advantage of this opportunity to learn more about the candidates in this race, and best of luck on your campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.